Test, test, test. 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 Test, test, test.[919.51]
The legislature passed a gun bill that was signed by the governor. Yeah, we did do a resolution against it. There were eighteen towns out of thirty-nine cities and towns. They did a resolution against it. But there's been a lot of talk, what can we do here? What can I have here? What shouldn't we do? They come to take my guns, whatever the case may be. I want to get out in front of it and have the chief come up and just give a brief on exactly what he sees, how he reads.
Um, so let me pass out the substitute A bill that has passed.
Thank you.
There's been a lot of bills.
I think we have it.
Do you have it in your package? Do you have the right one? Because there's been a few bills. But that that's the one that that has passed.
Substitute A.
Yeah, so.
There's extras here if anybody would like one. Joe? Joe, you want one?
He's sleeping.
Twenty-six. Anybody wants one?
And you can get this online if you just Google Rhode Island Assault Weapons Ban Bill. Just make sure you're looking at that substitute A bill because uh, the one that was proposed with the registration of the firearms, that's the one that almost passed and and that would have kind of crippled us at the police department because that had a provision that anybody that owned an assault weapons uh, or a weapon that was defined as an assault weapon. And it clearly states what defines a weapon as an assault weapon. They would have to register that within one year um, at the at the police department um, for a twenty-five dollar fee. Uh, and that law also stated that we would have to fingerprint you when we, when you came in to register that. That alone, the, for us to fingerprint you and submit the prints costs the town forty dollars to do that. So you would come in, pay twenty-five dollars, we would pay forty dollars. And then we would have to have an officer come in and do all the paperwork for your firearms. You would have to bring your firearms to the station. It would, it would have crippled us. I mean, I would have had to go into the town manager and ask for probably a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, just an aligned item for overtime to post to do that. But anyways, uh, and I.
So what does this one?
So this one, uh, this bill does not have that registration in there. So this bill goes in effect on July of twenty twenty-six. So it has a whole another year before it goes into effect. And it really just prohibits the new sales of anything classified as an assault weapon.
So the people who have an assault weapon now, no one knows that they have it.
Correct.
And they have a year to buy more.
Correct.
Right, let's just.
Yep.
Worst case scenario. And then the police will still not know. So if the gun dealer wants to sell somebody another one.
After the law?
After, yeah, July twenty twenty-six.
Yeah. The gun dealer probably wouldn't be doing that. They wouldn't be be able to sell it. Correct. Right. So in Rhode Island, all the gun dealers would be prohibited to sell a assault weapon in Rhode Island. So what what's going to be challenging on this, and and I can see some things is, is uh, you know, they're not, guns aren't stamped the date that they're made. Okay? I mean, the serial numbers on them, we can trace them and everything else, but after this law comes into effect, if somebody has one, uh, if they buy one from somewhere out of state or whatever and bring it in, they can always say, well, this is before the, you know, I've had this gun before. I mean, but, you know, um, one I, one thing I want to make clear. We're not going to be going and seizing people's guns. Okay? We're not, even if this bill is law, in law, the police department is not going to go knocking on doors and saying, do you have assault weapons and stuff like that? So I just want to make that clear. There, I was told that um, there was going to be a weapons assault weapons ban, some shape or form passed through this year, and it and it is. You know, and I'm glad it's a watered down version that it's really not making the town's liability of registering these firearms, because that would have been a nightmare for us. It really would have. There were, logistically, I don't know how we would have done it. You figure we got eight thousand residents or or more in the town of Hopkinton. What's the percentage of those that own firearms? Even if you took a third of that? What's the percentage of those that probably have assault weapons? Even if you said half of that third, that's still a lot of weapons that people would be coming into the police department to try to register. Um, so.
If there's no registration, this this thing is.
Yeah, there's no registration.
Unenforceable.
Yeah, yeah, it it is really is unenforceable, but uh, it's a, it was a political thing, I I believe, and you know, the governor wanted to get through and he got it through.
So what is, Chief, what is your definition of assault weapon?
Well, it's not my definition. It's the definition that's in the law. I mean, that's why I'm providing you with it. There is, uh, there's a few things. One, if there's a flash suppressor on the barrel, if there's a bayonet lug attached to the barrel, so a lot of these old military weapons will have those. Um, if the stock is folding, if it's telescopic, um, that that classifies it as an assault weapon. Uh, if it, if it can, uh, any weapon that has a detached magazine that, uh, you can put a magazine that holds more than ten rounds, that would be an assault weapon. Uh, any shotgun with a cylinder, um, round cylinder go through it would be an assault weapon. I mean, they make shotguns with a cylinder, kind of like a revolver, and and they hold multiple ones. Those those shotguns are now deemed an assault weapon, so. Um, there's a lot to the bill. Uh, that's why I kind of uh, put it out there.
So at the time that we had our vote here, people thought that they were going to take a gun that they go shoot rabbits with, but that's not an assault weapon. Correct?
I'm not sure what people are using to shoot rabbits with, but the old ten twenty-twos with the tubular fed things would not, that would not be assault weapon.
Really was.
Yeah.
Not explained.
Right.
So they were.
You know, a lot of the old lever action rifles, those won't be assault weapons. You know, the old Winchester and Model ninety-fours, what everybody hunted deer with, you know, in Maine and stuff, those are not classified as an assault weapon, but.
So if I wanted to say, I wanted to walk into, say, a gun shop right now, tomorrow morning, I wake up and say, I need an AR fifteen. I could walk over to a gun shop, do the paperwork, do the seven day wait.
Correct. Pass the background check at your local police department? Yes, and you can have one up to, and there's a lot of gun dealerships there uh, right now, or having blowout sales to try to get rid of their inventory, and a lot of people are buying them, so.
I do, but, you know, myself, I've watched this pretty close. I think you're going to see this get challenged.
Yeah, I I I'm sure it's going to get challenged, but you know, it's the same with the high capacity magazines. I thought that would have been challenged by now, but these things do take time and go through the courts uh, system, so um, you know. You'll, you'll see some things change, but, you know, we're going to have to deal with whatever the law is. The police department is going to have to uphold the law, I mean, so.
I understand you. Appreciate it. Counselor James, you got a question for the chief?
No, I'm all set.
Counselor Davis?
No, that's fine.
Counselor Roy?
I just have one comment. It's a shame that we are one of the first thirteen original colonies that we just celebrated independence from the British. And now our Second Amendment is under attack, so it's just astounding to me. I hope it doesn't get challenged.
I generally don't do this, but anybody from the public would like to ask a chief question? One once, one twice. Chief, I can appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing me.
Thank you, Horace. All right, moving forward, new business.
Don't forget to do the consent agenda.
I have a question on page twelve.
Okay. Well, uh.
Of the, of the town council meeting minutes of June sixteen. Little ones. Okay, one, two, three, four. The fifth sentence down at the end, which is the police and fire departments will be cheering the last buses as, should be they, not the as they, and then um, let me go from the bottom. The tenth sentence up from the bottom, uh, says Council Gary suggested, no. There, after the the sentence, it says Council Gary suggested putting a survey on social media and the town's website. Then the next sentence says there was, and I think the word a discussion, the word a is missing.
Think about it, I'll do, we're all doing.
There was a discussion. And I'm like, anyway, that's my thought. That's it. I make a motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of June sixteen, twenty twenty-five as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Here he is. All right. New business. One, discussing certain possibly vote to set a date for a public hearing for a proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances Appendix A zoning regarding neighborhood gasoline service station sponsored by myself. See draft page three and five.
And also fourteen.
Fourteen.
And fourteen.
Page fourteen. We can do what?
It needs to be advertised in the newspaper for at least three weeks.
So that would bring us out to.
We have a hearing August fourth or August eighteen.
I've reviewed the draft that came from planning and I I I have no concerns at all with it, so if, as far as I'm concerned, you can do it as soon as you're able.
Eight-four.
Eight-four? No, is it good?
Yeah.
Worse for me.
I make a motion, we set a date for a public hearing for proposed amendment um, for neighborhood gasoline service stations to be August fourth.
Second. Most of the floor.
Yes.
Hello, Steve Moffett, Diamond Hill Road. Um, I just wanted to make the comment of, I was kind of disappointed to see this uh, put on the agenda. This was a prior nonconforming use, um, this business, because this this ordinance is targeted toward one specific property in town. Um, I was disappointed to see in the ordinance only a hundred and fifty feet of frontage when in a town of Hopkinton, you can't build a house on anything less than two twenty-five unless you go in front of the planning board and get a um, an adjustment to that. So, um, and this particular property is in a very high trafficked area. Everybody's driving down Route Three now, Main Street, Massachusetts plates from everywhere. It's just going to be crazy. It's going to be busy. For the forty-seven hundred dollars a year they pay in property taxes, which is half of what I pay. I think, um, kind of biting our nose off to spite our face potentially, as far as seeing it as as economic development. Um, it's, it's a small little piece of property. There's six gas stations just outside of Hopkinton. There's two inside of Hopkinton. Uh, gas is cheaper outside of there. I I I just don't see the point.
Well, this is a here, we're just setting the hearing, so you can bring back.
I want to make the comment because I don't know if I'm going to be able to make it back to a, to a hearing, so I want to counsel to hear my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, motion's on the floor. Second, all in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Farf, go ahead.
Well, we, I mean, well, we are going to have a public hearing where the applicant will be there to to be able to respond to these things, so. I just, I mean, if.
Just a quick thought I had, if you're gonna start having uh, some gas sta, new gas stations coming in, uh, that's at least do something and have them put in some uh, uh, something for like my car, that that, these are battery, battery operated.
Oh, electric service.
So, so, you know, if you limit them to four gasoline, but you might allow them to fit in uh, to say a couple of uh, electric, electrical uh, cars. That's, you know.
There you go.
And then they can charge whatever they want to charge, just like they do for the other uh, gas, and if they give a good enough rate, they'll get some business.
All right, motion on the floor. It's passed August, oh, August fourth, right?
Yes.
Did we say, did we thought?
Yes.
We had second.
Second, I voted. I don't think, anything you did, you.
Roy, aye.
Here he is. There you go.
August fourth.
Okay, number two, discuss and consider possibly vote, set a date of public hearing for proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances Appendix A zoning two and a section regarding farm brewery, distillery, winery sponsored by myself, page seventeen. And I think he just wanted to put a little bit of loose time on this one.
I, yes, this one, I had some uh, questions and comments on. I I sent those to planning this afternoon. Uh, I, Marita had given you three dates you could pick. I would just suggest picking one of the later ones for this to give a little more time. I think this one needs some some fine tuning before it's uh, ready, and and Ashley's been on vacation, so I haven't had a chance to talk with her directly about it.
The first date out of September second.
Say.
September second.
And the one before that would be.
September seventh, second? That's not.
The reason I'm, I'm pushing for the little bit earlier one, the eighteenth is, there might be some. There might be somebody who wants to buy the same land for.
September second is actually a Tuesday. The holiday is the one day.
For housing. I don't know if you want to do that.
What they want to do.
I would prefer the the sec, the early, early one.
The August date?
Yeah.
August one?
I don't, the eighteenth, I don't think we have any, I mean, none, none of the, you know, comments that I have, they're, they're all things that are, that can be resolved, that, you know, so I I I think that'll give us time.
Okay, okay. August eighteenth?
Yes.
I make a motion to set a date for a public hearing for um, Code of Ordinances for Farm Brewery, Distillery and Wine, Winery to August eighteenth.
Second. Most of our second, all in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Here he is. Hey, counsel, please. Number three, discussing serve possibly vote to award RFP for number two fuel oil to ginger service station for twenty cents per gallon added at fixed price. Town manager?
Good evening, counsel. So I will go through the the three RFPs individually. They're listed on the agenda, but I thought I'd start off by giving a high level of how this works. Um, for those that aren't familiar, every three years, we have to go out to bid for new contracts by state law. Uh, so that's what this is, where the contracts were expiring. We've gone out to bid for these three contracts twice now. The first time we went out to bid, we advertised in the Wesley Sun for two weeks. Um, we didn't receive any bids on these three contracts. So we went back to the drawing board. We called every company that we could think of in the area and asked them why, why they didn't bid, you know, tried to get some, do some due diligence as to why these companies weren't bidding. Um, general consensus was they didn't know. I I don't know what that, I guess maybe they're not reading, uh, you know, the Wesley Sun looking for advertisements. We also obviously put it on the town website. Um, I, in, in the past, we've done the Providence Journal, but as Marita can tell you, that's a costly endeavor. Um, and we don't really draw the local vendors as much as the, you know, the um, other, other companies within the state, so we've tried to stick with the Wesley Sun for those reasons. Um, again, the first time we bid these or or put an RFP out, request for proposal, we didn't receive any bids. Um, so we reached out to all the companies that we thought may be interested, previous uh, companies that we had worked with in the past uh, that held the contracts for the town, asked them if they were interested, and this time around, we received one bid um, for each of the contracts. For the number two fuel and the diesel fuel, it's uh, Ginger's, who is currently our vendor. And for the winter salt and sand, it's uh, Rawson Material, and I believe we had Richmond Sand and Gravel. We contacted them, asked them you know, if they were interested in a bid, just made them aware of, of the town's um, proposal, and they did not submit a bid. Um, so I don't know what else we can do to draw interest to these people to get them to bid, and I'm not quite sure why uh, they, they didn't submit a bid, to be honest, but um, but, so this is what the results were. Uh, Ginger's again on the number two fuel and on the diesel fuel was the sole bid. And for winter sand, it was Rawson's material. So Dave's here, he can answer any logistical questions, or I can answer any con, contract question.
So for, for the number two fuel, that twenty cents, is that?
It was previously ten, ten cents.
That's what I wanted.
In the last contract, and it's now twenty cents. Yep.
Okay, and then same thing for um, the diesel fuel?
Diesel fuel previously.
What was it before?
Diesel fuel was previously, do you remember, Dave? Oh, yeah, I got it. Uh, it was, that's the ticket. Um, so I think it was forty-four cents? Forty-four cents?
That's over rack price.
Over rack price. Uh, hold on, wait a second. No, that can't be right. No, I, I'm sorry. That was also ten cents. They were both ten cents. And now they're both going to be twenty cents.
And then the middle one, the sand?
That was previously uh, fourteen sixty-four per ton for pickup, seventeen ninety-four per ton delivery.
It went up.
Yeah. Yeah.
So is it, is it cost effective for the town to have it delivered or picked up? What, what is the cost savings?
There is none.
There isn't any?
It's cost prohibitive. Um, back when Director Teff was here, we did a disability study, uh, mileage, labor rates, all of that combined, and and because of the size of our trucks, being a six-wheel, seven-yard dump truck, we have to have the eighteen yard triaxles.
Okay.
And or sometimes trailer dumps, which are substantially more.
Right, yeah.
So it was, it was cheaper to have the delivered product than to try.
Instead of picking it up?
Obviously, it's time sensitive during the winter operations. It's tough for us to, if we're out fighting Mother Nature.
Yeah.
And we need product, we can crawl our vendor.
And they can get it immediately shipped.
Typically, the next day, we'll have it delivered.
Okay.
And just to, just so you know, uh, that we can, we don't have to choose which one, like today. That's not something that it's like one or the other, so that, that's the price for the three years, whether we decide. So at some point, if the say, the, the rates change, right, um, whether it's labor rates or fuel rates.
Yeah.
Um, transportation rates, I should say, we could, we could always adjust that. We could go back and forth. If it's an off season, they had some downtime, they could do some pickup if it was feasible. But like how, uh, Director Caswell said, historically, it's been.
It's more cost effective to have it dropped off. Okay.
Excellent.
I'm, I'm all set.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to vote the award um, for number two fuel oil to ginger service station for twenty cents per gallon added at fixed price.
Second. Motion for a second, all in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Make a motion to award the RFP for wind sand and winds, winter sand to Rawson Materials for twenty-one dollars per ton picked up and twenty-five dollars per ton delivered.
Second. Motion for a second, all in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Here he is.
Make a motion to award the RFP for diesel fuel to ginger service station for twenty cents per gallon added at fixed price.
Second.
Motion for a second, all in favor?
James, aye.
Davis, aye.
Roy, aye.
Excellent. Okay, all done. The chief, town manager's report, update on town hall expansion.
Yep. So, uh, per your request, um, I asked Greg Smalley of DRA to come in, and he put a presentation together to come answer any questions that the council or the public may have about the timeline and uh, where we currently are, what the status is on the town hall project.
Evening, I'm Greg Smalley with DRA Architects. It's good to see you all.
Good to see you.
Good evening.
I do very few projects where you can actually see the work site from your meeting location, so this is kind of different. Um, we put together a, a, a quick update. I checked, last time I had been down here was in, I think, May of twenty-three, somewhere in there, when this was just getting off the ground. And um, as you probably have recalled, it went out to bid. We had the same problem that you're having with some of your other services where no one was giving us a realistic bid. Uh, we put it back out on the street, got a few more bidders and got a contractor tower construction um, from up near Providence, who is um, moving along. And I put together this slideshow. We can just zip through it real quickly. I don't know who's running it. It's not me. There it is. Thanks, Jeff. Um, so this is, um, we are sitting in the pink building. The orange is when it's going to be the new building up behind you. Um, next slide was the floor plan from the inside, and it's um, the lower left is the, the council chambers where we are right now. Um, working here involves taking down the two walls that are behind you and expanding the platform out to um, closer to what it was before and providing a small ADA accessible ramp up to the side, the, to um, stage right, to allow a non-ambulatory or wheelchair-bound person to make it up onto uh, onto that stage. The um, town council, uh, town clerk's area stays essentially as it is, and all of the um, remaining town services get to be in the new building. It's about five thousand square feet. It's a little bit bigger than the building we're in right now. Uh, next slide will take us through a timeline from about here to the end. We are um, working with Tower now to get their schedule um, committed to a um, a, a full timeline. They've been providing us with three-week look-aheads. And those three-week look-aheads were getting kind of blown out as we went through spring with all the rain we had. But now you can see we're coming up out of the ground, and by the end of the week, we should see foundation walls poured out there. The footings are in and all the subsurface work was done. So I am tentatively saying end of the year. Um, I think it'll be one side, other of of that with the holidays, uh, depending on what the weather does to us from here on out. Um, next slide will tell you a little bit about our, our delays. We hope to be much further along than we are right now. Um, this was rainfall from April through to this week, and you had a couple of days in there. On single days, we had close to two inches of rain. And I don't think we got anything more than four days in a row without some kind of measurable particip, precipitation, so we were struggling, and not just uh, not just Hopkinton, but every one of our projects this spring was having a tough time if it wasn't already out of the ground. Um, next slide will take through a couple of photos of what we found out there. So this was the eighth of May. Um, top surface has been taken off. Um, this doesn't look, but that's actually the bottom elevation of the footings. So there's, we're coming up more than we're going down, and we knew we had some, some clay and some suspect soils to deal with. The structural design for the footings anticipated it to a certain degree. What we didn't anticipate was the depth of it. So this was um, May eighth, and next picture is a couple of days later, we just kind of run through these. It was May tenth where it rained again, and it did a pretty good job of, yeah, it was, um, you could have stocked it with trout, but it was too stagnant, really. Um, and the problem was, we, typically, we would just release this with a cut in the ground, but we have the regulated wetland area behind us. So we had to take care of all of this within our uh, our own abilities. Um, next slide. We got it to dry out a little bit, and this is that silty clay that's kind of floating under a lot of the buildings down this end of the state. Um, this was a day we had um, the contractor on board uh, at the site, and we had a geotechnical engineer that we brought on board. Um, next picture shows we dug down to um, where we got into more stable soils. So that, right there is almost forty inches down before we hit stable soil. And that was pretty consistent. As you got closer to the building, it got a little bit shallower. Um, perhaps it was sitting up a little bit more when it was first built. It's hard to say. Um, next picture, we started to think that we were making progress, got some excavation done in uh, keeping with the geotechnical engineers directive, and then we went back to um, fish hatchery conditions again. Uh, next one, we do, we do start to win now. This is uh, May twenty-ninth, and you see the riprap, the gray at the uh, at the end, starting to stabilize, so we get some trucks into here. Uh, next slide is when we excavated down a little bit further, got the, got under the clay, and you see we're, we're now down deeper. The, the line that runs down uh, center left to the bottom is actually the sanitary sewer line for town hall, which needed to be re, realigned because that's right under the footing for one end of the building. So we had a couple of steps to take there. Um, next slide, you see what we did for solutions here. And dug down to good gravel. The black is a geotextile fabric that lets water through, but holds on to silts. And that wraps under the gravel and then back up around. It's filled up with gravel and then folded over the top, which is what you're looking at there, and then there is gravel put on top of that, so that's lets the water go out from under the slab and get out past the footings. lets the water go out from under the slab and get out past the, uh, footings and drain back out to the ground the way we want it to and the way it would originally. Um, next slide is just a different view. There's the, um, sewer line right before it was moved. So foreground of that picture is the footing for the south end of the new building. And now that that line's been rearranged, if you have a chance to look outside, you'll see that there's two new septic tanks there, one of which is idle at the time, but it has the new line running through it that allowed us to set the other footing. And the, um, I think that might be the last picture in this. But we have, um, oh, no, there it is. So that's our riprap entry road, which is allowing us to bring materials in without losing trucks. And that will be, um, repositioned, probably put under some of the parking lots as we start to move around and and, uh, reconstitute the backside of the new building. So we are now up where we can work on the site, whether it rains or not. And we, um, we anticipate that we'll start seeing some progress here. And as we work with Tower to go through any additional costs for, um, that subsurface remediation, I'll be working with the town manager to make sure that that's fair to everybody, and we'll get get the building moving. Hopefully be in by, uh, end of the year. Any questions?
Questions? No, I'm good. I think we're all kind of shocked by the pond that was there, of course.
Lot of water.
We all got teased a little bit, but we knew eventually, just it was rainy. It was a very rainy day, and it started going into a rainy June. So I'm glad that we, you know, we made significant progress. I'm sure the townspeople are too, because you've got two projects going on. Of course, you know, we got the, the community center, we got this. So long time coming. A lot of people sat here, wished they could have done this years ago, but here it is now.
Certainly, I'm sorry. Good.
I just want to know what, with the terrace, how much has the materials increased?
They have not. Because they were publicly bid prior to those going in, they, um, they have to hold their pricing. It was one of the pushes for us to get it bought out before all of that became more of an issue. And so we, um.
And what about the furnishings?
Furnishings, we are working up a budget for that. At this point, they are not part of the construction. Um, typically, how I described is if you could take the building and shake it and it falls out, that's furnishings. And so that's your computers, screens, those type of things, chairs, tables, all of that. Um, I'm working now with a, um, a couple of the furniture vendors. Uh, typically, we would recommend you buy it off of state contracts. And that lets you, that lets you get a stabilized price over a couple of years. And also, we'll assure you of the chance to buy some of it now if budgets don't allow you to buy all of it and still get the same equipment as you go forward, because those contracts are typically stable for five-year periods. So we'll, we'll be talking, I'll be working with, um, the town manager as we get into construction a bit more about, uh, furniture package and what a, what a budget might be for that.
And one last question. How much do we have in the budget for overruns, et cetera?
Uh, contingent?
Yeah.
Two hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sorry, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. You too.
All right. Public comment going once. Public comment, Brian, anybody online? Up for include out, there's a couple of things I'd like to put out to some people, or, uh, like just put out for general, general information. One, I want to thank lease, fire, and EMS from both towns, Hockington, well, all one town, Hockington, Old Valley. If most of you on Facebook have Washington, was a Washington County fire, you know, it was just an incredible, crazy weekend. These guys were out almost twenty-four, seven for a couple of days, and just want to say thank you for what they do. You know, big, big thing. I mean, a lot going on, you know, just throw a holiday on a Friday. It just throws it, so throws it into the mix. Another thing, too, if we, Brian, can we get this on the website, too? The Ashway District, hopefully I'm saying this right, Ashway District Fire Meeting for the public, which we all have at the Ashway Fire Department, will be on the seventeenth at six o'clock. So if you live in the district, please come, hear your voice heard, and see what, uh, you're voting on. And for us, your CFR is two, the thirtieth.
What is this?
I know you didn't say that.
I don't know. You used, I don't know it that way. Report's already in.
Sorry, I didn't prioritize your professional on this.
The fire district was when?
The seventeenth.
July seventeenth.
At six o'clock. When is it due? Anything on its report?
Yeah, July thirty-first for the, for June, for the quarter, for the second quarter. April through June. Yeah, you do have to file.
Let's not ask, uh, Mrs. Cefor.
Yeah.
And one other piece of business, uh, I'm gonna let Counsel Roy do it. I'm gonna say a few words, if I can everybody to stand up.
We all know that we lost a, uh, member of our community that had put in a lot of time and effort and years into, you know, dedication to the community. And although I did not know Scott all that well in the last year or so, I've gotten to know him, and he was always very kind. And he, you know, had his quirks, but he was still a human being. And I believe that the last, you know, six months of his life were very troublesome. And I feel very sad that he has left us in this way. And I pray that he is at peace. And I wanted to definitely mention something and to basically set an adjournment, but we're not adjourning right now, in his memory, because he was a prominent member of the Republican, uh, party, and he was a wealth of knowledge. Some people didn't agree with him, but he was still a human being, and he deserved the respect and the admiration of what he's put his life to in this state. Thank you.
Just to, uh, everybody to stand, please. Yeah, just, uh, you know, me and Scott always had our differences, just like everybody does. But there's one thing that I never doubted in my entire mind the whole time I've known Scott was his desire for the town to always succeed and do the right thing. And that's how Scott should be remembered, somebody that would always try to do the right thing for the town. As far as funeral service or anything like that, it'll let the family resolve, your family figure that out. Uh, I know Senator Lena Morgan is trying to put something together. So as soon as we find out exactly what it is firm, we'll send an email out, maybe get on the website.
Oh, we're going into public, I mean, uh.
No, we're done.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn in the memory of Scott Bill Earth.
Motion for a second, all in favor?
James, aye.